We have no bid openings today. No awards or presentation, no schedule for the hearing. You mentioned there was something else that we needed to possibly bring to the agenda?
Yes, sir. To recognize the governor's proclamation and formally terminate the continuity of operations plan in the local state emergency.
I'll entertain a motion to add that to the agenda that could be voted on.
I'll make the motion.
Do we have a first or second any discussion? All in favor say aye. And that would be the co-op. And then what we call the co-op.
The coop.
The coop. And that'll be the D on new business. Consent in the... Everybody give a aye. Everything is silent. I'll entertain a motion to approve the consented. Mr. Cobb makes the first and Ms. Cobb the second. Any discussion about the consented? All in favor saying aye. Motion carries. New business. Aye to me. Whereas the Cleveland County Commission has passed a resolution to allow the county engineer to outsource roadside maintenance during fiscal year 21. And whereas Mr. Cobb has requested that roadside maintenance in District One consist of non-chemical intervention only, such as mowing or brush painting. Therefore, the Cleveland County Commission approves this request and instructs the engineer to discontinue the use of chemicals for roadside vegetation management within the territorial limits of District One until or unless the District One Commissioner rescinds this resolution. Is this your resolution?
This is my resolution.
Is that... You made that motion?
I made that motion.
Do we have a second? Ms. Cobb makes the first. Is here a second? It dies from that, no second. New business, aye to me. Whereas President Joe Biden declared Juneteenth as a national holiday to be observed on June the 19th of every year, or if June 19th falls on a weekend, it shall be observed as the closest Friday or Monday there too. And whereas Governor KIU proclaimed Juneteenth as a state holiday on June the 18th, 2021, and has also declared it as a regular state holiday in future years to align with the national holiday. And whereas the county has historically followed its lead to this date. And whereas the county chairman made the last minute decision to close the county offices in celebration of Juneteenth on June the 18th, 2021, following the governor's guidance and aligning with the seven judicial circuits' decision to close the courts of the seven judicial circuit. Therefore, the Cleveland County Commission ratifies the action taken by the chairman and authorizes the human resource officer to leave the page for Juneteenth as a holiday page for all county employees. Do we have a second?
A second.
Ms. Cobb, any discussion?
I'd like to modify the resolution to say 2021, just one time deal. Until we can look at it in the future. Mr. Chairman, can I move?
Yes, sir.
That would result as the second to last align with the resolution, say authorizes the human resource officer to leave the page for the 2021 Juneteenth holiday and holiday page for all counties. Is that correct?
Yeah, I think it's something we should discuss because I'm not for having another holiday. We're gonna have this and we can take more. Okay, I respect that. But that's your amendment. Are you okay with this amendment?
I'm fine with amended for this one time, yes.
Okay. So we have the motion to amend the second. Adding even that that last, the last paragraph of her...
Last paragraph.
Did I understand? All right. Any other discussion about it?
This is how we do.
And that's what he's saying. For right now, we're just doing it to clear...
Clear the...
Be ready to act, go back. I was called... I was called off the order that day. Called after business hours closed. I even spoke to Mr. Oden. And after we discussed it and followed suit with the governor and also our presiding judge, who's Mr. Turner, he closed the circuit over, he's closing the whole circuit. So I made that decision and I appreciate that. We can at least fix it for now and then we can decide as we go further, what to do. And if you speak at this time, and then we can make amendments if we go forward. Any other discussion? All in favor saying aye. The water resolution, do you have the D worked out?
Mr. Cobb, you have it.
All right, so we're awarding, in this resolution, we're awarding those three different awards, right? Two?
We were awarding the installation to strength construction and the pipe to consolidated pipe. And that is for the CDDG grant for the water.
Okay, and you got that? Yes. Yes, sir. And Jason drives a resolution out to you. Let's do this. Fact, governor.
I mean, I have to, I need to see that.
So basically, the resolution will be big subject. And I'll give a few minutes. Give me a few more minutes. The coop, you have a motion for that?
Yes, sir, I don't have one.
So the resolution for the coop would just be to end the coop?
To, yes, to recognize the governor's proclamation and to formally terminate our coop in the local state emergency.
So good. One resolution or two?
One resolution.
We've been doing it as one, each missing, each meeting previously, saying until the next meeting we're going to formally terminate it. And by this, you're recognizing the governor's decision to formally terminate it.
Entertain motion?
I'm not voting motion.
Got a first?
A second.
Ms. Cobb, seconds. Any discussion? All in favor saying aye.
Brian, please. Your resolution will be wherefore the Cleveland County Water Authority has made applications through the community development block grant for bids for water line extensions along county roads 49, 689, 114, and 447, and a separate bid for materials for those water line extensions. And wherefore, the county water authority is required to make application through the Cleveland County Commission. And bids have been received for said contracts. Therefore, the Cleveland County Commission approves the award of contract number one to strain construction company in the amount of $221,670.40. And contract number two, material to consolidate pipe and supply, in the amount of $52,836. Both of which will be submitted to approval by a day.
Thank you. Do we have a motion? Do we have a motion?
A second.
Second. Ms. Cobb, discussion? All in favor saying aye? Motion carries. Now, gets our voting done, except for old business. Reports from staff. Ms. Kim?
Yes, sir. I passed out later to each of you, and it's from East Alabama, and it's about the CDDG CV, which was CARES Act. And it was $200,000 that had been set aside for our county per CARES Act. And we had allocated it for water projects. Those projects have been deemed ineligible. And the reason given to us was because we already had water projects going on in our counties, we already had water problems in our county, and they do not think that it was going to be realized. So, they had deemed our project ineligible. I asked East Alabama to reach out to it to give us a 30-day extension so that we could look over the list of projects that may be eligible that we can try, and so we don't lose the money. If we don't try to claim the money within 30 days, then it goes back to the state, so...
They don't allow us to reapply?
They will allow us to reapply with a new project. We would have to at some point, chairman set aside a session called meeting, pass resolutions within a 20 days to get to her. I've given you all the list, though, and I threw out some ideas. I know that we have the issues at the jails and the water problems that we have there. That would be ineligible.
But, Wes, did we have any involvement that you could look at?
I tried that one. She said PPE has been a really good one, if we wanted to look at PPE. I knew Ms. Cobb had made and mentioned that the volunteer card departments need to turn out here. She said that may, would work, but we would have to add more things to it to count your loan and not our. So, it's very...
Well, they're coming with their, their backpacks and things would be added to that, so...
She said we would have to really add more things to make that be a print, so... I was just throwing some ideas at her to see if she thought it would be a print. That maybe the commission need, talk about and decide what projects we want to pursue so we can send that one project, or multiple. We can do multiple projects, but it's only $200,000.
I would like to throw back to him. He mentioned, he spoke to me that there is possibly that a water grant could still possibly be...
Speaking in a lobby, I didn't wear this for a record. I turned around, she told me I have to reapply. Water has to reapply, and water should qualify. But I have two roads, two, and a lot of departments, a lot of departments. Two roads that I put on there, you're not, and another lot of people. So if I were here, is that I can reapply? She's saying, if I was telling them to work, I'd be guaranteeing that that was first edition if we wanted to water.
Will you present that to us, those two roads, and that be part of our consideration? Everybody give a aye? If you come back to that, listen.
I will, I will. I'll show them what the number is, probably, if they need to change locations again.
Okay. And who will ask office, special committee? It's a specific question.
Our audit is, is close to being finished. We should be done within the next two weeks, and then you should be given an email about exit reports that I don't have anything yet, and we're getting close. And budget books have gone out to departments, so we are starting budget process now. That's all I have for you.
Any questions for Kim?
We need to recognize Kim for her further education of actually got a new degree the last two weeks, or...
Did you?
Certified county administrator.
Okay, good.
Congratulations. Moving on, our county engineers, his son was in the World Series, and I think they lost. Tell me that position on their way on, but they, they did well, so... Mr. Joe, remember, Mr. Turner, Ken? We have special counsel, I know that we have Ms. Hope Hicks here today, and she's going to speak to us before we start. Do you think so?
I do think so. Just to... I was just wondering why you wanted to do the new business.
Oh, yeah. Also, in the consented, did we put her in? That would be that. In all my, um, business operating, which involves Gibson, Gibson is interested in serving in the hospital board. Would you consider, um, we adding that in, in Kansas, so we can put her on my board?
I make a motion that we do. She's a certified CDA.
I'll say, I'll say. Got first and second? Did we add the resolution to possibly add, um, a new, new hospital? Should we take in?
Chris.
Chris, thanks. All in favor of adding, say aye?
Aye.
Okay, then I'll entertain a motion to affirm her position as a board.
I make a motion.
Ms. Cobb makes the second. All in favor of saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thinking, I forgot to add that. Um, old business, the pay study. Is that something we have motioned before?
I make a, I know we, we had talked about it, and never did, and never did, nothing was ever decided. I make a motion that we go forward with it.
Do we have, do we have someone who's going to, who we look at as best practice? Do you have any, and I was talking about hand, I didn't know what to say, everybody?
Please say two words.
Is there a way we can, you want to look that up? Or could we, and look at...
And could this not be split between each department, or this calls for this study?
Is that, is that in there? Is that what you wanted, is that what, is that what her recommendation is?
No, it's just something that, you know, I'm, I'm asked and not...
Oh, okay. We have, um, we talk about it? Yes, right. Um, my opinion on this is right now, the labor in this, with the United States is so outwired across of what the federal government's done. The sort of way you're going to do it right now is not going to be consistent with what next year's going to happen. I mean, they're calling it, uh, laborflation, is what the financial channels are calling it, calling it, or even, uh, that the companies out there are having to pay the core labor costs just to get employee income, which, a lot of these companies, McDonald's, Home Big Boil, all those folks, they're poor. You're not against the study, you used to worry about the study being, um, I just thought you'd give a perspective to try doing it, I'm down with what we're doing.
It's that most of these studies are done by companies that, you know, this is what they've done. They're not going to base it on what they're coming here, what's, they're gonna, they're gonna look at what's been going on. They're not just gonna overlook it and consist with just, what am I trying to say? That, that with, with the job market, the way it's been, they're not just gonna look at that, they're gonna look at past experience too.
Kim, yeah, for the sake of time, you know, we kind of, Ms. Hope Hicks here, she's about to come and speak to you. And the old business, um, I suggest that we take a 10-minute break, and, uh, now give Kim, I mean, Lisa a chance to come back with her information, and then we'll get ready for Ms. Hicks to talk before we're speaking about our employee. Take a 10-minute pause.
I'd say something before you break.
Yes, sir.
The people around here probably hate me, you know, all the county just knows what you do, but I'm gonna be the first one to admit we have a problem, you know? And there's a lot of things that went on that I'm, I'm not going to agree with it on a bit. But at the same time, the commission needs to come together and resolve it. We don't need to do it one district at a time, and then do it countywide. So, just let it be known.
Then may I make, uh, change my resolution to say countywide no spray then?
If you want to add, if you want to add anything to it, it's...
I, you know, I would like to change that, make a note, because, you know, I was trying to ask, being the commissioner for District One, and I, and I didn't want to get into your territory, but of course, I've not been allowed the respect to make a decision for my district. So now I say, if it's that case, let's just say no spray countywide. Because there's issues. I mean, we've all seen it. I mean, these people, a lot of them's from your district, and they, they've been mistreated. Uh, people in my district, I have a water issue. The spraying is not the solution. We can save money some other way. Man, I like the cutting myself. I think it works better. Yeah, my price gets high, but, you know, they've been living with it. And I'm saying let's go back to mowing.
All right. Add it to the agenda. You know, I understand. Let's, I want, I have to be logical for the moment. I spoke to Lee today, and he says there is no more spraying for...
This year.
This year. So there's not going to be spraying. So we're not in a rush, we're not suffering in a rush, but I know it's important. But what I'm saying is, can this wait at least until we get back to my break?
I guess, well, you know, back to my break, but, but I would like to bring it back up because, you know, I've been told so many things, and it's very obvious, some of the things are not true. So I'd rather protect my people or the citizens of Cleveland County.
Yes, sir. All right, 10-minute break. We'd like to, um, we'd like to address, I know Ms. Cobb, I know that Ms. Cobb mentioned about bringing back her motion, but we looking at our procedures, and after speaking with Mr. Oden, we have made a decision that it wouldn't be proper at this time to bring that, go forward with that.
Not during this meeting, Mr. Chairman. The motion, doubt for lack of a second, but it can certainly be placed on the agenda for the commission's next meeting.
Next meeting, okay. We do know that, according to Lee, and speaking today, there's not going to be spraying anymore during the summer, right? Does that everybody's understanding? Okay? Absolutely. So we can still, the commission can do its homework and possibly make a decision in the next meeting without any more spraying going on between now and tomorrow. Okay? Everybody's comfortable with that? Next thing is the pay study. I think Lisa provided the information.
She did. So we have Condry and Associates at $27,500, and we have Auburn University at $25,000. Their votes are recorded. It's, this Condry and Associates sent us a list of governmental agencies that they have done pay studies for in the past. They have all kinds of cities, and they've even listed from other states. They have counties, they have cores, so in every single state, they've listed what they have done. So, they're really impressive.
So, is there, yes, sir, did ACC, ACC, did they do a study two years ago? We have a study from two years.
They did a study, I don't believe in the last year, this is county-based, in the population. Yeah, and this one will look at more, so, um...
So this one's going to look at construction companies, right? Right now, at this time in the world, way more than they normally do to give a project...
This one's going to look at similar positions, similar, similarly situated positions.
The one from Auburn, is that the one you're talking about? As a study of all the resources around, surrounding?
For the county and surrounding.
But that they did not do it on a comparison scale?
Yes, they, they will look at jobs that are similar to what we have and where we're losing, our employees, how they're transitioning.
Is there one that you favor? You think?
I do, I favor the Condry and Associates because they have an extensive list of governmental agencies that...
And which one, how many is it, Cobb?
27,500.
27,500, and what is ours, what?
25.
Okay. Now, this is on old business, so I can entertain a motion, or make a motion.
I make a motion that we do the study.
You want a name?
Uh, under Kim's recommendation.
The...
Condry and Associates.
There's a motion to do a study for the county to pay for, so that you're, this company, tell me one more time.
Condry and Associates.
Condry and Associates.
And Brian, something too that I need to point out, that, um, if we make any changes within our employees, you know, it's, we have the potential of lawsuits.
Okay, hold that for discussion for a minute, please. Do we have a second? I'm sorry, we have a second. Discussion, man.
Uh, the one I want to say, because if we make any changes within our departments, I know in the surest department, we have issues in the jail department. If we even bump them up and change their pay scale, we're looking at possibility of lawsuit, could be. But with the pay study, that eliminates the lawsuit potential for us. So that's the reason that I was moving more towards the, the study, to keep us from being in any type of lawsuit. Now, we have two attorneys here, I would love to hear their opinion.
Okay. Any other discussion?
I understand that it's going to last 11 months before this time lapse. Is that, is that the contract I looked at, or not? Is it one from Auburn?
Now, this is not from Auburn.
Did they say how long?
It does. They'll start, they were going to start in July.
This is actually Lisa's work, I'm not trying to take credit for it, she just didn't want to scoot up here and talk to them.
My, my main concern, what I think is the length of time, and, uh, you know, within waiting was the personnel that she used to have for several months, and, and it hasn't happened, so hopefully this won't delay us another year or four weeks, if they want to move the personnel.
Any other discussion?
Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
It would end September 30th, 2021. So it would be four months. They had, they had planned on this beginning in June, so it would be adjusted, but, but it's something like it's about a four month.
Okay. Yes, sir. Just, just, just for reference, a $1 raise for the employees that we have right now would cost us $160,000 a year. So that's just, I'm just going to throw out there for reference. I know we've got people that need to make more money, but I also know what our budget is, and when you start talking to some of this money, it's, you might be paying some people more money, but you're going to have to lay off some other people, because there's just not any money there. I mean, you know, $160,000, $1, that's $1,000 for $5, that's 10% of our budget. We absolutely can afford that, because there's no way our income is going to go up 10%. And, I mean, I'm not for paying people for our wages, but we need to figure out some way to, to narrow it down to the people that we actually need to do it to. And I don't think this study is going to do that. I think this study is just going to raise pay for everybody, the week in, for... Any other discussion?
But what would be the solution to these departments, like where you're, you're, you've got, and the jailers, that it's a big turnover, you've got 911, you've got a big turnover, and then you've got the road department that we have problems with. How, how do we fix that problem without putting ourselves in jeopardy?
I don't have a solution. Like I said, if, if Kim and Lisa ran these numbers, if, if our employees that we have around, not any employees, just what we've got now, if everybody is on top of that, let's say, uh, you're loco break on that motion, I'm just rounding figures, you know? Do you see any way we could come up with a...
I understand, and where is our solution? I've been asking that for three years, and we, we don't, we talk about it, but we don't ever do anything.
We do have a motion and a second. Any other discussion or are you ready to vote? In favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any of you votes, a vote. The ayes have two more. All right.
I'd like to, I'd like to, to, to one of our attorneys. When this guy comes back and says that we need to pay X number of dollars, is that going is that going to, could that possibly get us on lawsuit if we don't do it?
Again, and we've had this discussion, anybody can sue for anything. However, if you get a study that comes back and makes recommendations of certain amounts for each department and the commission does not afford it, if you use that study in a pro rata fashion based upon the budget available to give raises where necessary, then you could certainly hold it up as a shield and say, we did our due diligence and in doing that, we found that X department needed a 2% raise, Y department needed a 10% raise, but we can only afford, you know, a quarter of that in our budget. So the department that was going to get a 2% raise then gets a half a percent raise. The department that's going to get 10%, gets a two and a half percent. There are certainly uses of this study to give you the ability to do that due diligence and make informed decisions. But, and I'll, I'll take it over to you.
No, I, I, I don't think the study gets, stops you from being sued, but I think it's because people can sue you for anything. But if you get sued and you've made decisions based upon this study, you have a very good defense as to why you made the decisions. If you don't have the money to give the raises, you don't have the money. So you can't be forced to give the raise that you can't afford to give.
Okay, I got nothing else. So I know we've got a couple of departments that, that need the money. I agree with that. But because of our limited funds, what if you have to lay off folks in other departments to come up with that? Does that open you up to lawsuits?
If, if you determine that layoffs are the right path to go and you lay off based on monetary need, then you, this, money is always the best defense for this. If you lay off based upon age or based upon race, that's when you get into a problem. But my guess is if Laboring County doesn't have an abundance of employees standing around doing nothing, so the chances are they can give a much lower raise and try to keep all the employees employed than start laying off because then your work doesn't go down.
All right. Discussion accomplished by Chairman, Commission. Any other things you want to discuss? I spoke with Miss Hitt. She has, she has made a suggestion that we not possibly vote on this 109-page budget tonight. It may be possible to vote on this to start in October, October 1st. But she's going to hit the hot ones, am I right?
Yes, I'm sure that sitting around reading 109 pages in my handbook is not the most exciting thing. But I did want to hit a few highlights with you to, to kind of tell you where I, when and why I did some of the things that I did. Kim and Lisa have been exceptionally helpful right now. And what Kim is bringing around is, I realized this morning when I was looking back through at the table of contents, just said general personnel policies for every single chapter. So this, you'll substitute this table of contents in for your future reading. That's what I mean.
Before we start, Miss Hitt, I did want to say now, we're not planning to vote, is that understood? Okay. But we're still in the meeting. We're still in the hall meeting. I did want to let, I already know you're welcome to stay still in the public. But if, if you want to stay, it's 109 pages and we're going to put our handbook. So I know this pertains to some of you that work, but we did appreciate, we just want to give you an opportunity. If you're not, you want to go home, you can go home, you all see.
Are you done voting for a minute?
Yes.
I would actually like to.
They all have voted for me.
All right, Miss Hitt, so we'll forward you.
Thank you. Commissioner, by all means, if you have more questions, if you've got, let me know. And I'm happy to answer anything. But my first note was on page five and I think that we've answered that question, subsection F. My question was, are you guys working on salary or step system now? And I think that the vote just said we're, we're going to do that. If that's the case, this section might need to be modified based upon that study. The study might tell you you might want to do steps or something along those lines rather than just have operator. So this could be modified, but it would be a very slight modification at the end of your study. If you could still go ahead and adopt this even before your study is done, it wouldn't be a big deal to change that.
Sure.
Um, section F of number one, page five. The next one I want to make sure to talk about is on page eight. Section B, the very bottom paragraph. This is an agreements procedure. And this specifically deals with before you get to agreements board or any board, just sort of interdepartmental issues. And a habit in this that employees employed under the revenue commission should address their complaints to the revenue commissioner. Employees employed under the private office should address to the private judge. And employees of the sheriff should address their complaints to the sheriff. I just want to make sure that's how things work here and that's who they, employees should go to with their initial problem.
Now, V, that's always been our kind of chain of command. Unless there would be a conflict with that, if that person was, was the problem.
And, and it goes on to say, if for any reason those people are the problem, they should go to the human resources officer.
What about the commissions?
They go to their private department head.
I mean, we've got always a word breaking for us. We, yeah, so we have Kim and Lisa, but the rest weren't under you, right?
They're all commissioned. Brad, Lee, Lisa, Crystal, and myself.
Any other things that you know about? And also Chair.
Thank you, yes.
So the ones that report directly to the commission, um, they should take it first to the human resources officer and then on to the commission. So I'll, I'll fix that. The commission is, yes.
And you've made recognition to, to change the, what is it? Answering one commission?
Yes.
And that would be the maintenance.
I, I do know that you have one employee that reports directly to one commissioner. As a rule, and you all know, an individual commissioner doesn't have the right to make a decision. Your body has a right to make a decision. If you're going to have him report to the individual commissioner, you probably need to pass some sort of resolution making him an additional manager. But then if that employee has a problem with that commissioner, he would report to the commission minus that commissioner because he kind of can't go to the same person twice. At, at one point, there was a conversation about moving that employee to the maintenance. That's the maintenance that replies to the, just to the commissioner over.
So he does. Now, in, in the law chart, Lisa has him under the entire commission, but that typically answers to the one commission.
That's sort of something you guys need to, to talk about and vote on tonight. Do you want to continue to answer to one commission? And does he answer to one commissioner for daily assignments? But then if he has a problem, does he come to the whole commission? And I don't have a problem like I can't, I need a new screwdriver. I mean, I'm like, I'm having a problem with my work, with the way I'm being treated, that type of thing. Not a day, top problem. It, it really a rare situation to have somebody report directly to one.
He typically answers to him and that's, um, this year, um, to the commission. And, and, and him has specializes in that because of what his, his background. And, um, before that time, the maintenance, because so he entered to the private judges, it was still the same problem initially. And I didn't have time to, to monitor who we had and, and, and him, you know, had a lot of expertise in that and that's why the commission had to time. And that's before all of you were here, I think. You might have been given this thought when that first happened.
So it means that he would answer, but we would have to pass a resolution and then to manage that position.
Well, you've historically done it, but I don't know that you've ever officially done it where he has the management over that. I think if you're going to continue to have him manage an employee, the commission needs to vote to have him manage that employee. But then that, and specifically if he has any type of grievance, that he reports the grievance to the commission as a whole. So we are agreeing today that I would think, and truly I don't need to come back to handle all these little votes of Mr. Oden's here. And you're not going to have to pay him the traffic for Montgomery. Um, if, if those kind of things, there's no reason you couldn't be able to. But I think that's one of the things you definitely want to do is pass a resolution that you, for now, Commissioner Oden is his manager. That any grievances go to the commission as a whole. And I'll communicate with Mr. Oden this week coming here for.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
Once you go through here, we're going to come back for our questions.
Oh, no, stop me anytime. This, this is yours.
I mean, I don't have a question way back here where we started.
Well, close to that thing, you fill in.
About, um, about on page one.
Oh, good, here we go, page one.
Yeah. Okay, I didn't see unclassified employees in here either.
No, sir, I took those out.
Okay, so we're going to change that to appointed employees?
Yes, sir. Uh, for the, if for any reason, I think unclassified is, is a classification and I brought a little crazy about the term, unclassified as a classification. But, um, the only unclassified employees that have, um, there's been a conversation about contracts. And I brought those with me tonight for you to have time to review. We can add a category back if you decide you don't want to enter into contracts. But if so, we'll come up with something just as unclassified, just for the fact that I think.
Also, I think it's on V right there. You left out the Cleveland County Commission. You named everybody else, but you didn't name us.
Well, you're an elected official.
Okay, so we have to cover that? Okay, I'm ready.
Okay.
All the stuff, I have a question.
Please do. The next one that I want to explain to your attention is on page 10. This administrative compliance procedure is just a very different procedure from what we had in the past. And I wanted to make sure that you review it and make sure you're comfortable with this procedure. It's a pretty standard type thing, but I did want to make sure that you review it.
What page do you think?
Yeah, just fair within the normal way that employees, if they have a problem, where they know what steps to follow and who they're supposed to go to if they have problems. And it has a timeframe where you're, where the private department heads, where their supervisors, to their reply to their problem, so that things don't just hang out there indefinitely. Here's my problem, here's your response.
I got a little.
Yes, sir.
Going back to unclassified, we don't have to do anything. It was all right if we passed this, it'll automatically roll over their job description for unclassified exam or, or if there's any action we need to take.
The, for them to be an appointed contract employee, you have to enter into a contract with them. And so.
We got, we got people in the county that's unclassified, they're not in a contract.
Who's unclassified?
Chief clerk.
They, um.
I mean, I think this choice has got, unclassified, it's got.
Yes, sir.
It's a certain body.
And those are appointed employees because they serve at the pleasure of the elected official. And so that would be, um, employees of the Cleveland County Sheriff, the chief clerk of the private judge, and the chief clerk of the revenue commissioner.
But what I'm asking is, is there any action that you need to take to change their job description? Whether you're unclassified.
If the job description reads unclassified, the job description would need to be changed to say appointed employee for those people.
So there would be action to do that.
Yes, sir.
We can't just do a resolution and say unclassified language changes over to appointed employee. Or you've got to take one of us.
You can do a resolution that the employees of the sheriff, the chief clerk of the private judge, and the chief clerk of the revenue commissioner jobs are no longer unclassified. They are now deemed appointed employees on resolution. Next resolution. These, this, and this are no longer unclassified. They now are appointed contract employee. So you could do it in two resolutions for the two different classifications.
So significantly, you can do a resolution? This particular handbook, in some ways, would take care of the sheriff's office. Not every detail because everybody works at his leisure, right?
Right. And, and I called and, and to ask that question, did the sheriff's employees get this handbook and use it? And they get it and they use it to supplement the sheriff's rules. So this gives information about holidays and benefits and things like that. But those that serve directly at the pleasure of the sheriff are subject to sheriff's rules.
Right. And if you have a grievance with the sheriff, that's when you, sheriff, he lets you go. There's no, that's it.
That's it.
But I don't have a grievance with the sheriff. I always feel the same, Matt.
You don't want to go to the sheriff.
Right, I agree.
The next one I have is page 14. You've got one in between, let me know if it missed. This is just section H, a HIPAA policy. You guys actually don't have HIPAA policy and you need one to be, um, compliant with federal laws. I've drafted a HIPAA policy for you. Um, I think Kim distributed that to you. Honestly, it is a full and complete HIPAA policy. The only changes I've made to it are who you refer to in Cleveland County for it. So the only thing that would need to change on this would be the date that the HIPAA policy was adopted. So we need to adopt a handbook to adopt the HIPAA policy at the same time.
It's pretty standard across the nation.
The next one I have is page 23. Actually runs on to page 24 and these are other policies and procedures. I've listed these rather than put them in the handbook because these type of policies tend to change more. And rather than need to reprint or redistribute handbooks, you can just redo these policies. But the annual safety and recognition program, that's a policy you already have in place. The computer equipment network resources, you already have that in place. A purchasing policy, I, I put an attribute because I don't know if you have one or if you want one. That we're talking about what employees need to do to make purchases and improve the day you can get, what dollar amounts and that type of thing.
We actually have a $5,000 limit that's going to.
We have that and we have a purchase order policy, you know, if you get issued, you can work with it.
If, if you guys could just give them a minute, we'll modify to make sure that we list all of those that you have. I, of course, added the HIPAA policy and then the hazard duty policy. I've, I've looked at your hazard duty policy. I don't think the policy needs to be updated, but it does sound like maybe there needs to be a review of jobs to determine if the jobs listed need to be reevaluated. The policy itself, as far as recognizing the type of duty and paying for hazard duty, I, I didn't see any changes that need to be made to that.
Since we're, we're not under the, whatever the COVID deal that the governor had, since we're not under that, COVID would not be considered hazardous, right? I mean, you couldn't use that to say, I'm afraid I'm going to get COVID, that's hazardous.
Um, I can tell you that even during the height of COVID, I didn't believe. Um, I can tell you that even during the height of COVID, I didn't believe it was an employment hazard with the possible exception of people that were working, actually hospitals working and dealing with COVID. If you went to the grocery store, you're just as likely to catch a issue or sit in an office. So I, I don't think there should have been hazard duty paid for non-medical people. That's Hicks's thoughts. So I don't think that would qualify as a hazard.
The governor, then, has a, then that probably takes our office away.
Yes, sir.
Do we have a section in here?
You do have a hazard duty policy already, um...
Yes, but I didn't see it in the draft, but I hear.
It's not, um, it's your current policy. I can give you one that you can have. And so I think the only thing that needs to be modified there is are there employees that are performing hazardous duty jobs? I walked in as the revenue commissioner was making her case. Um, that's for you guys to decide. Do you think the, who's employees, not individually, what classifications? Do you need to add some people to that or do you need to take someone away? So that would be something else that you need to look at and vote on.
Do you have any legal guidelines to, to guide us through it? I mean, what, what, what does the courts consider hazardous job and not hazardous job?
In extreme conditions would be the first thing.
I, I mean, it sort of gets with weather, danger, exposure, you know, the mental stuff.
And those are the things. I would tell you, you have a hazard duty paid policy here that you've had in place for years that as far as I can tell has been effective for you. But I don't typically write hazard duty policy pays. I think the job to pay what the job pays and it ought to be put in there already. If you are operator two, your salary would be seventy five cents more based on your job, not the hazard duty of your job. So I don't write hazard duty policy pays.
Do you think you're opening yourself up by actually having a hazard duty policy?
I'm not a fan of them. I'd rather the salary be consistent with the job and not call it a hazardous job personally.
So your recommendation would be not to do that?
My recommendation should be to pay people for the job they're doing. And if their job is a little more hazardous, I'd pay them part, but I'm not a big fan of a hazardous duty policy. I, I, I'm a defense lawyer. I handle claims for workers' comp. And if you said somebody's job is hazardous, then I'll walk into court a little further behind the eight ball, all red. The job is what the job is. I think people ought to get paid if their job is more hazardous than somebody that's necessarily not doing it, but I'm not a, I don't write hazard duty policies.
Are you writing it down and saying it's hazardous? That is, that's one strategy?
A, a lot of courts would think that.
Let's leave that page out.
I think your pay study that you're doing might give you some information on what the pay ought to be without a modification perhaps would be. I, I wouldn't change and take hazard duty policy pay away right now. But once you get your pay study, I think you ought to specifically say to them, we like to know what the base pay is and are people doing hazard duty policy or are they just doing the base pay? Page 26. This is just approval for salary changes. I, I think the section C, number one, I believe you have always done that pay changes are really just done at, by pay raises on an annual basis. You haven't come in and said, we could say one person needs a pay raise because of certain set of circumstances. This gives you the ability to do that. You don't have to have that ability, but it gives you the ability if you want to. There are pros and cons. The pro is you have the ability. The con is people are going to come ask for it. If you'd like to keep it where you only give pay adjustments at the time for raises, then keep it that way and take this out. Do understand that with all of these pay raises, paragraph number two is here, that if you don't have the money, you don't have to give the raise. But this gives you some leeway that you haven't had in the past. Again, you may not want it.
Okay. It has to have the commission's approval or department's approval?
Commission's approval. But I, I would encourage you to make a note about page 26 to consider, do you want that ability or not? Our question, if you're not going to page 34, you got anything between here and there? And this one, I think, is more my question, uh, page 34, section M, disability insurance. And I think I just didn't know if you have this. Kim, Kim, on page 34?
Yes, ma'am.
Do, do you have, have this disability insurance and is this how your policy works?
We have disability insurance. Are we allowing employees to purchase short term, long term, or do we don't pay or we have an act in place?
Okay. So this is that they can purchase it and the premium is deducted from their paycheck?
Yes.
Okay.
That's your answer. Well, I'm not...
Sam, your problem. Okay. So that was, that was my experience. The next one that I have is to page sixty, one sixty-two. Okay. It's a four in there. Okay. Forty-eight.
Many areas over there. Uh, on C, number one, we asked sentence. Turn that for me. See if we are to place the same.
Okay. This comes from the language that you have because of your percentages of pay grades. And so this is if they were already at, can you explain this better to me?
Yes. So if I've been here seventeen years, then I changed jobs, I take where I'm at in my seventeen years, move into my next job. So I don't lose my seniority in my new job when I'm there. If I'm fifty percent above the pay, I keep that.
Okay. All right. Uh, as long as you're getting a pay raise to take a new job, it shouldn't, like, if he was on top of pay and he get a promotion to another pay grade, going to top of pay on that, I don't agree with that. As long as you're getting a raise, you should, I agree, but I don't agree that you should go to wherever you're at as if you've been in that job ten, ten years. So I would just, what does everybody do? I mean, that's not going to be voted on at this time.
Yeah, I, I, I think make that an item for special to kind of conflict what you want to do. Um, it's page forty-eight, last sentence of section C one, um, and that is your current policy now.
I understand.
I mean, but if I'm with you, if you want to change something, now's the time to do it.
I mean, I don't, I've never worked before, before that's the case. If you get a promotion, you're going to get a raise, but you should get always the top raise, you know, to our place.
Mr. Chairman, I'm ready.
Yes, sir.
It's... It's similar to the military structure as well. When I, when I was a first lieutenant, I'd been on active duty for three years. I was promoted to captain. I was captain with three years in the army. After I'd been a captain for four years, I was in the zone for major. If I'd been promoted to major, I would have been a major in seven years. So it still has those stair steps, but it just maintains your length of employment on a pay scale.
But private sector doesn't do that. Private sector, if you're moving from a flat, I mean, hour of the money, you're moving from a B, you're making $10 an hour to a C. Okay. And the bottom pay on, on C is $12 an hour. That's where you should start. You shouldn't start at fifteen in the middle of that pay range. That's what I said, and I don't understand it.
Well, what happens with our pay scales and the way they overlap, you could be taking a pay cut because of the entry level may be less than what you're made. So you could be taking a pay cut.
I'm good with making sure you get a raise, but I'm not good with saying that you're going to be, you're going to be the same employee on that as you're going to be when you need to. Because that's what this is doing. This is saying, okay, you've done a great job on this. You're at this level. We're going to move you up here and we're going to go ahead and put you up here because we think you're going to do good.
I will tell you, in, in a lot of policies that are right, where I've not dealt with this, pay grade level is staying the same. What we do is we say, you get this promotion and you get no less than a five percent raise. And so that way you're not going to take a pay cut. You're going to get a pay raise. And then that's where you are. And I don't think you actually have steps in place right now. So the next time it's time to get a raise, if you get payback, everybody gets a two percent raise, you can get a two percent raise. So you can do it to guarantee that a raise happens.
If you get a promotion, you, you shouldn't get a raise, but you should get...
A job.
Yeah, you shouldn't, you shouldn't get something until we see what your job allowance is.
Performance period too. You don't get to, there, there's a performance period where you've got to go. And they can, each department, if you're not performing, they can let you buy if that decision is still on the...
Can we do this? Can you, can you write as a possible change for that? I'll turn it for that. And then when we come back to vote, that'd be one of the things. Is there any other changes so far that we, anything we can change, anything so far that we need to vote on so far?
Yeah. Yes, and we've, and Kim's made notes of those about classifications and that thing. We've got those printed out.
So can you fix some alternatives later?
Um, okay.
Okay. On forty-nine, E one, we've got the same sentence that's in there for D motion, which... I mean, I, I'm for, I'm for keeping it at the same pay if everybody's a agreement with it, the most. But I think that last sentence needs to be rewritten clear.
Well, that last sentence, which one?
Forty-nine, eighty-one, last sentence.
I will look at some possible alternatives for that. I think these two also may gear back to you when you do your salary study. If they come up with steps for you, it may resolve some of these things as well.
I was just wanting to come up with that. It's a page number nine, it's not even a character.
This is, is it, is it a law?
I've seen that. I would bring them up to view their difference.
It's in their law.
This was in their law, so it's a statute.
Yeah, I've got it in one stack.
I'm just getting it.
I noticed that people have actually written down and I'm just nothing.
Sorry, we are constantly going back through it, going back through it, going back through it. And so I just want to make sure that we fix everything we can before I get it to you. Yet still giving excuse because you started working on it before.
Okay. We're going to mark that and fill it in.
Yes, sir. I marked it to look at.
That's forty-nine.
Yes.
My next one is fifty-two.
My next one is sixty-one, sixty-two, so fifty-seven. Terminations?
Yes. It's on fifty-six, D two. Which is still pretty much the same, the same things we're just talking about.
Okay. All right. I'm just going to mark those pages to go back and look at the same alternatives.
All three of those pretty much doing all the same inside. Fifty-six, what? Fifty-six, D two, the last sentence. And what was your next?
Sixty, so you do, starts on sixty-one and goes to, like, we just need to talk about sixty-two. So this section deals with grievances and you have a grievance committee now. Your grievance committee process ends at the grievance committee now. This is completely up to you if you want to let somebody appeal from the grievance committee to the commission. This would give the commission the final say. You don't have to do this, but you can do this. You don't have any local laws that allow or prohibit you from doing it, so you can do it. There are pros and cons to this. Pros, you get to make a decision and not just the appointed grievance committee. But the con is then it puts you in a much greater role and, and really puts you dealing with employees and their grievances. And you have a staff to do that. It's completely up to you. You've never done it before.
I would assume that you'd like it here. I agree.
Start with the grievance committee.
Yeah, then it takes the policy.
Okay. What we're going to take, we're going to just delete on page sixty-two in general.
The whole page?
Yes, sir. And then the next one I have is on sixty-eight. Should you get the four there? And sixty-eight, I just need to know the, the name of the clinic to fill in the blank. So that's not really anything for you guys to do. Then the, the next one is, um, page seventy-eight, which is section thirteen, the drug and alcohol policy. This is one hundred percent completely to the revamp of anything you have. This is the ACCA's drug and alcohol policy. If you adopt this, plus take a couple of other steps, you get discounts through the ACCA on your insurance. It's the policy that I've always included in every handbook I write for counties.
So you love it?
I do, I do. I said, it'll save you money too, but it follows federal law. It does a really good job of tracking who is and who is not and using and not using. It doesn't test any more than you're supposed to test. It makes you keep a register of who is safety sensitive, so who is supposed to be tested. And like I said, if you adopt this, let's take one or two other old steps, you get a discount through the ACCA. And I verify you're not getting that right now. So...
And also, it did have a court we would have, but this is the way, if you have a county... If I got wrong from that, it's, uh, good, right? It's good. Good. Makes sense.
I agree. But clearly there are options here. Those are the kind of biggest ones I wanted to bring to your attention. Um, if anybody has anything else, I'm happy to...
Okay, I got one.
Yes, sir?
I would like to press this to the exit interview.
I believe...
Did you put that in and I just missed it?
I believe it's in here. But if it's not, I completely agree with you. It should be. It's in, okay. I usually do.
I guess I missed it. I read, I read, start the page. What page is that?
I'm trying to think where it was. I read it today.
I think it would be in section seven, which starts on page fifty-one, which is employee separations.
If you sit down and probably just, that's what we're all going to do.
You forget it. I can assure you when you start writing this too.
Since section A, Monday, November, February, employees who resign shall schedule an appointment with the human resources officer in order to complete an exit interview.
Right, right now, our policy is just put the department in, right? Yeah, if they resign, I mean, they, I guess you can't make them, can you? But I mean, they, they hurt them if they're going to rehire them.
Well, if they did complete their exit interview, then because they're on note in their file, didn't comply with county policy, and you might think twice about rehiring them.
Well, you accept the job. You're accepting all these rules.
Yes, there's another exit interview provision under termination in E two that says that exit interviews may be conducted with employees before their last scheduled work day.
The other policy that, um, I would, Kim passed out is a cell phone policy. This is a little different than their current cell phone policy. This gets a little bit more discussion about determining who actually needs the county cell phone and who doesn't. And specifically, it's for employees who perform the majority of their work at a designated workstation, has a phone. Do not work outside of designated regular work hours or to do not respond to on-call or emergency situations. They should not be provided with a phone or be reimbursed. If you work irregular hours, work outside of a desk where you have a phone, if you're on-call, that's who gets the county cell phone. I, I think it's just a little bit more clear cut rather than each department doing it their own separate way. It's pretty clear cut rules, but hopefully it is fiscally responsible. It's pretty clear cut rules, but hopefully, it is fiscally responsible for you.
However, now, my chief clerk doesn't have one. Is yours? With this, this.
My clerk is out in the field, but it stays in the office when she's, um.
And, and so, you don't think they need this?
Well, no, I mean, I mean, I'm just saying, I just want y'all to be aware. Do we, do we have a policy now?
So, we have a few resolutions, though.
I know, we do, but do we actually have anything about that?
The department has the side of the cell phone.
But the policy is trying to protect this. And then we'll make a resolution if we turn, if we have a resolution after resolution, about, oh, this will eliminate that.
So, if, 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 I put Alexa County officials appointed contract employees, chief clerk of the public judge, chief clerk of the revenue. If yours don't have them already, and you don't think they need them, let's scratch that. Let's don't pay for things you don't need.
Well, I mean.
If you need it. But if they don't need it, don't give it to them.
Anybody that's paying time has a cell phone. And, and my clerks, even my clerks up front, sometimes I can text them, quicker I can email them or something, and ask them to handle a problem. Everybody uses their own personal phone, but I mean, I get, I get a reimbursement. You all get reimbursement. You do, but I, my chief clerk doesn't. So, I don't know. I, I, I think this word is where if anybody's on here right now doesn't have one, it's illegal for them to.
Oh, so the language that we have in here, if we took those two as they automatically are gonna get them, we took those two out. Then the next two sentences down, point department has the revenue commissioner, the project judge, shared for county commission, may determine if any other county commission employee needs a county cell phone. So, if, if somebody thinks they need one, they can always come to you and say, they made these qualifications, do you approve it? But if they don't have one now, and you don't necessarily think they need one, I would, I would say, let's scratch this out for sure. I would also say, almost, I mean, like, everybody has their flat rate plan now. It's not like twenty-five years ago when we had a bad phone, and every call and every text cost us money. Most people just assume not have to have two. They really just want the one they have, and they'd rather get their checks from you and not carry to a rent. So, if you don't have employees that have them, I would use this as a policy to give more out. I, I'd use this more to, to give me to pull back on who's got it.
Okay, so department heads has the power or commission has the power?
Yes.
Commission has the power.
The department has had the power, and the county commission has the power.
So, the department head have to bring it to us, or do they just not like to do it?
They can do it, but they are supposed to use this as the guideline. Not just, I like Sue, let me put the county pay on the phone. Sue work away from her desk, because she work irregular hours, is she on-call? If so, then she needs a phone. But if Sue sits at the desktop late eight to five doing their job, she doesn't need a county pay cell phone.
That's kind of, if you, my situation, chief clerk gets me a lot. On the weekends, it's a time, if I'm not available, the sheriff can call her a lot times. She doesn't, she does not get paid, and she doesn't get reimbursement. But we have situations where this lady's looking to, yeah, look. But it may be something I need to consider in my budget. Mine's considered commission law. Don't take your mind as commission, chair, and not as project judge.
Um, I, I will make that change on the cell phone policy. If Kim, you got copies of the policy, that all means, read through it, you'll need to adopt it, and then that, those dates will go in the handbook for when it's adopted. But it is an absolute just board like type of thing. Also, then, they do, um, propose contracts for the county administrator, the DNA director, and the community resource officer. These are in their packets. It's the first time you've seen them, you don't need to take any action time, but you just need to review them. These are, you asked me to prepare these, so I have. Um, review them and be ready, I would say, to discuss them on your next meeting, but you don't need to do anything until now.
I brought them.
I didn't do it, so.
Three of them.
I do. Yeah, I bring them, everyone kept. Yes, sir. For all, she hasn't passed them out, she's got all three over two past second. Sorry. She's, she's.
Okay. To miss each contract, you're gonna have to come back to resolution for each, one through two. I mean, what you've done so far is just, we've been authorized to look at it, but if there's nothing on the paper.
No, sir. You voted to ask me to, to look at them, prepare them, and that's what I've done. It's now for you to review and determine if you want to enter into their mind. Not exactly very similar. Um, they're all for a four-year term. I did put a beginning date because that would be until you vote on it, but I have them expiring September thirtieth of twenty twenty-five. I did that because that's the end of the fiscal year. So, they need renewed contracts at the beginning of their four-year, two-year fiscal year, whatever you want to do. But I did, I did it based on four years, which again, permanently changed, and this is just my proposed direct to your consideration. I, I personally think four-year contracts are appropriate, while that can go through two commission cycles from four years. I know that this is not a commission that turns over every two years like some policies, but there is the potential that it could happen. So, I did four years so that you, sort of, the commission that starts it, gets it, plus the next one enters into this contract. The next commission cycle would have been reviewing contracts of the year.
Wouldn't it be better, I need them, to, if we decide, so we'll have three each year, and the engineer, we did all one year, I said that actually. Why could you not say, okay, administrator this year, engineer next year, the nature that's here, and DNA is DNA? I mean, why don't you do it all in one year? That would have been a good potential disaster.
Well, in practical senses, I would not expect you to want, not need contracts with four employees at one time. So, I think the potential disaster is minimal potential. Um, I did it based on commission cycles. You could do them four years, but start, somebody with one, somebody with two, and somebody with a three plan, and then give them four year after that, so that they are staggered when they need to be renewed. You don't have a lot of turnover in your staff. I, I, I think the potential for all four people living at one time, and as, right now, your engineer has a five-year contract, I'd make that one four if I was redrafting it. Um, I don't know the law says you can get up to five, but I, I kind of like the idea of the commission cycle, getting to do this. There are counties that do contracts based on just a commission cycle, and I have counties that do contracts for one year every year. I think it's a really, really bad idea, and I don't recommend that, because people work with such uncertainty. And it's a constant, we're getting your contract renewal times. I really don't recommend it in one year. Two years is almost that bad, which is why I did four to commission cycles. Just a proposal, by all means, every bit of this can be reworked and done to the way you want it done. But that, the four year, I felt like was a, a good two commission term cycle, long enough that people had time to be in their jobs, you can't from their jobs, and you to completely evaluate, make sure they're good in their jobs. They are, they're flexible.
So, this is, I'm sorry, water, you're, and contracts like this.
If you were a county that turnover your staff on a really regular basis, I, I definitely look closer at staggering. That's not been historically the way things have been here in Cleveland County, that you had a master.
I understand that, from a management point, really this thing. I mean, if, if you're looking at it from a managerial side of it, if, and I'm not talking about, you know, if you've got three employees that all get together and say, hey, we're gonna quit, we don't do this or that, and renew your contract, you're behind that problem. And I'm not saying y'all are losing, I'm just saying, that's a possibility, and something you can play. I was going to go say, four contracts, I was.
Well, thank you, you have time to discuss it and think about it. And, and I'm more than happy to come back if you've got more questions, or if you want to email me things, call me anything, for me to look at, send you alternatives, so that I can just email, here's alternative, 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 and then you can vote, and we can do one complete copy out of the hand, we can do this, you can approve it all as is with a lot of changes that we can all implement, that we've already talked about, or we can do the changes all through, you can do it however you want, and I'm more than happy to come back for any, any, any comeback.
So, this is, we, we marked it up and then presented to you or canceled or, or you tried.
From a standpoint of the handbook, I, I would say, if you'd mark it up and you would give it to Kim and Lisa, just because they deal with it on a far more daily basis, and they can call me, and they're very good to let me just say, okay, let's pick a time, and we have a conference call, because there are things that I put in initially that just don't work in Cleveland County. It's not how you've ever done things, and they didn't feel like it'd be helpful. I will tell you, they would think it'd be a good idea to ask the commission to do the grievance beyond the grievance panel. I put it in there so you knew that you have the ability to do it, but they know you all very well what's worked. So, I would suggest making your changes into them, they can send it to me, we can have a conference call, and I can make any sort of changes, or, or I can send back, I understand your question, here's why I've done what I've done.
Do we have a ten limit?
You, you don't. I would say, you know, we're in July, October first is not a long way away. Having a handbook that either starts the beginning of your fiscal year, or January first of your calendar year, I think almost everything here runs on fiscal year. So, between your August and September meetings, I, I definitely say your September meeting, you want to sort of get this finalized, so that there's time for it to take effect. I would also make sure that this is available online, and that way that anytime there are changes that are made, you can make it online, you can just give a page out to employees that got changed, because there's no reason to reprint this every time you make three changes. Lots and lots of people are going to where this is not even given in paper copy to all the employees. If they, especially if they have a work computer, you don't give it to them in paper anymore. They have access to it sitting at work. If you have a job that doesn't have access to computer, then you give it in paper. That's totally your decision how you want to do that as well. It's a lot of renting.
There's a couple of sites and places we voted on.
Yes, sir.
So, we, before we even look at the overall of that, I, I mean, not look at it, but before you even talk about passing it, I mean, you've got to make up the changes.
You could probably at August, uh, before your August meeting, I can send back, here's alternative, 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 and they could, without being a vote enough discussion, that then it gets switched, and so it's ready for September. All right, any of it? You ready to go home? Thank you, Mrs. Stevens.
Thank you.
All right, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. All of them say no?
No.
Don't you care? Well, I'm sure that I thought.